We'd like to welcome everybody to the Dallas-Engram School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Adri Yellingson, Director of Communications for the District. I'm proud to represent 3,500 incredible students and close to 500 dedicated staff members who are part of this team each and every day. We hope this event introduces you to the four school board candidates onstage with me as we prepare for the April 11th election. On behalf of the entire district and the four of you, we say thank you. This is a big job, it's an important job, and it's a tough job. So we want to make sure you know how appreciative we are of you being here and being in attendance tonight. A couple of housekeeping items that we would like to first thank the cast and crew of Footloose. This is their time in this space, and so we are thankful for them letting us use their area tonight as they prepare for the Spring Musical. The first segment of tonight's event will be onstage. This part right here will run for 60 minutes, and then all four candidates have also agreed to stay an additional 30 minutes for a meet and greet on the auditorium floor. Our goal is to clear the auditorium by 7:45, that way Footloose can come back in. We know there's a lot of interest and excitement around the event and the election. We ask that you hold all reactions until we finish with this portion of the forum, and we can thank and congratulate all four candidates at that time. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for an opening statement, and then we'll move to the six questions that we have prepared, 90-second answers for each, and then we will conclude with another 90-second closing statement. We'll rotate the order throughout the event, and Board Secretary Michelle Wamuth is sitting in the front row. She'll hold up a card when the candidates have 30 seconds remaining in their answer, and then again as the time expires. And with that, I'd like to introduce the four candidates onstage with me to my immediate left, running for the School Board Director-at-Large position Nancy Baker-Curtis and Matthew Moran, and running for the District Director-District One position Nick Vialla and Kendra Wolf. We will begin tonight's with an opening statement, 90 seconds in length, and Nancy will start, followed by Matthew, Nick, and Kendra.
Hi, thank you so much for coming this evening. My name is Nancy Baker-Curtis. I am a mom of two DCG students. My oldest is in fifth grade, and my youngest is in first grade. I am an educator myself. I teach eighth and ninth graders, Spanish one, over at Johnston Middle School. And I am a pretty passionate advocate when it comes to disability rights, inclusion, and equity. I am not only the parent of a disabled child, I am also the child of a disabled parent. Every single day, I work in concert with building, district administrators and educators, paraprofessionals, school bus drivers, to make sure that my son has access to a safe, productive learning environment. So for the past 16 years, you pretty much can find me in a school, either working, volunteering, or working hard outside of the regular day to make sure that schools are a safe place for everyone to be able to attend. Thank you for your time this evening.
Matthew, go ahead.
Hi, Matthew. I'm Matthew Moran, running for the at-large position for the Dallas-Engram School District. I'm married to my wife Alyssa, and we have three kids in the district. One is 11, one's nine, and the other one is five, getting ready to start kindergarten. What motivated me to run for this position was an incident that occurred about a month and a half ago with a very close family friend and her daughter. And it wasn't necessarily the incident that really motivated me, it was the lack of response that she saw from the administration. And so with that, she did not have proper... She did not get a proper response from the administration until Polk County Sheriff's Office was involved. And I believe that that took too long for the administration to respond. That was reinforced by the fact that after many hours of visiting with parents during getting signatures, I was told by a parent that when she read my reason for running, she cried because she was going through the exact same thing. And so with that, I decided to kick off this campaign. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight, thank you.
My name is Nick Vialla. Just to give you guys a background on where I came from, I grew up in a small town, Calender, Iowa, about an hour northwest of here. I grew up, the son of a fifth-grade teacher my mom taught for 35 years, so I've always been taught to respect education and teachers. When I was a senior in high school, I enlisted in the Iowa National Guard. I went on to serve 20 years. I retired in 2016. I have a degree in elementary education from Buna Vista University. I've been a small business owner since 2006. My wife and I have lived in Grimes for 16 years. We have two kids in the district, ages 14 and 11. I'm ready for school board out of a sense of duty to our community. I've always been called to do certain things, and I felt the calling to do this. So here I am, there is no hidden agenda with me. What you see is what you get. I'm passionate about adding some school resource officers to our schools to protect our children. I want to keep the curriculum age-appropriate, and I want to find a superintendent whose primary mission is to educate students and keep politics out of education. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. So my husband and I moved to Grimes in 2006, and we now have two children at Oakview. I started my career as a classroom teacher for seven years in Des Moines, and towards the end of that time, I developed a passion for educational technology. That became my focus for the next 18 years. The first part of that is a technology specials teacher at AEM Schools, and now it's followed up by my current position where I work with student data and data analysis. It's my personal experience that the DCG School District as a whole does great things, provides quality education, a wide, wide variety of opportunities for students' participation inside the school day and outside, and employs staff invested in its students. So as a school board member, I would look forward to sharing in the decision-making process to ensure that policies and guidance further the district's vision and goals.
Thank you. Our first question tonight, what is the role of the Dallas-Engram School Board in our district, and how you define the responsibility of a DCG School Board member? Matthew will start, followed by Nick, Kendra, and Nancy.
So the role of the board within our district, I think, is to provide a level of accountability to the administration that is responsible for supporting our teachers and ensuring that our policies are being properly followed. And so as a board member, I would be one that would ask a lot of questions to get to answers, ask for data to support decisions, while also expecting folks to ask the same thing for me.
Nick?
I believe the role of the school board is wide, you know, needs to support students, staff, parents. They need to be flexible, fast-moving, and listen to all opinions, but I think the most important thing the school board needs to do is protect the students, find the hot issues, and right now, I think we need a school resource officer. I was blown away when I heard that we didn't have a school resource officer, especially with what's going on all around the country. You know, if we can protect airports, we can protect other politicians, why can't we protect all of the students in their schools? Not only would that police officer or law enforcement officer be a deterrent to anyone that would seek harm to our kids, it also is going to paint that officer in a good light, it's going to give kids a positive interaction with a law enforcement officer. It's also going to deter drugs, weapons coming to school, and when parents drop their kids off at school every day, or they send them off to school, they're going to know within the day that DCG has done everything in our power to protect their kids, and they go to work, and they go to bed night, and have peace of mind.
Well, I was actually going to make some of these points in my closing, so you might hear some of these things twice. So I believe it's the role of a school board in overall, in general, to, you know, set policy, provide guidance, sort of an overall umbrella, and then it's up to... Or we provide oversight for the superintendent on the schools to then carry those out. We have a vision that's clearly set, we have educational learning goals that are clearly established. We need to have a safe environment for all of our students and our staff to operate within, in a very positive environment, so that that learning can take place. And there are lots of things that sort of come together, lots of puzzle pieces. We're talking staff retention to make sure we can have some continuity and school culture. And so I think it's important that we address all of those things, and then you have your capital improvement projects, so sort of lots of different areas that need to sort of come together under one umbrella.
And Nancy?
The roles and responsibilities of a school board member are much too numerous to be able to list in a mere 90 seconds. In the big picture holistic view, I believe that school board members should be working to communicate clearly the policies that are in place in our school district. They work to educate stakeholders, as well as to represent them through the elective process. Stakeholders is a widely defined group. It not only can... It is not only composed of parents, it's also composed of associates and support staff, teachers, the professionals that we have hired to do the very difficult task of educating our students. When I think about the many duties of a school board member, it's not only to enact policy and oversee capital improvement projects like building new buildings, but really it is that communication and representation piece, so that when decisions are made, stakeholders know that their voice is being heard at the school board level.
The Dallas-Engram School District is in the midst of a transition. What is your view of the current state of our district, and what do you hope the state of the district looks like one year from now? Nick will be first, followed by Kendra, Nancy, and Matthew.
Look, we have a great thing going here at DCG. I couldn't be happier that we decided to move here 16 years ago. My wife and I, I've had a great experience with every one of our students' teachers, our kids' teachers. They've learned a lot. The teachers have been just pushing them through, they've taken the time to make sure that they understand what's going on, and when something needs to be re-taught, we get them the special help they need. And I hope every... I hope that every kid have that same experience that we've had going forward. As DCG grows in the next year, I want to keep that same small-town atmosphere, that same town feel that we moved here for 16 years ago. I don't want to lose that just because we're growing in size.
Kendra?
Yes, so as I mentioned, I do believe there are great things happening here at DCG, and as with everything, there are some things that can be improved upon, like everywhere. So right now, this current... In the next current, in the next year, I would like to just learn more and talk to more people about their concerns. I know their hiring is kind of difficult right now for some positions for all districts across the state. I know there's a lot of emphasis on safe environments. I believe that's really important. And so, and at the same time, we have to continue trying to meet those educational benchmarks and goals that we're here to achieve. And so I would hope that in one year, we... The board, no matter who it's made up of, could find more consensus and find more common ground and really work together, put our heads together, to actually come up with some of the solutions to some of the problems that we might be seeing.
Nancy?
Love can happen in a year. And in our district, we have a lot of big projects on the horizon, whether it's building a new elementary school because our town is growing, joining on to and connecting the feeder hallways for the high school, looking at our transportation system and making sure that we have enough wheelchair-accessible buses for our 11% of our population that has an IEP or a health care plan. I would like to work with board members in a proactive sense, looking at our data, looking at our financial costs and expenditures, and plotting out and projecting what some of those projects will be, what their costs will be, and then coming up with financially responsible solutions and communicating those to our stakeholder group. A lot can happen in a year, and we have a lot of work to do. To echo what Kendra said, we need to find common ways and common interests so that we can work together collaboratively to achieve those outcomes and ensure the success of every single DCG student.
Matthew?
So as others have said, we have a good district right now, but there's always room for improvement. I get back to this bullying issue. It is a significant issue in the district. Seeing feedback from surveys showed me that it was a top issue for our group of students, group of teachers, community members. It was in the top three of all three groups, and so that tells me there was an issue. And then hearing the stories, I have to talk to folks in the community about what their kids have gone through and experienced. I don't want to see that continuing to happen. I think we are going to have to step up our reaction and responses when things like that have happened, and change how we proceed forward with that. Because a child that comes to school and hates school because he's getting picked on, or hates school because he's worried about what someone's going to say to him that day, he's not in the right mindset to learn. And so we can have excellent teachers up there for these kids, and if they hate school, they're not going to learn. It's that simple. So improving the safety of our school district is the number-one thing for me. And then after that is making sure I listen to the community and take their feedback to the board.
I had the opportunity last week to spend time with the student council at Dallas-Engram High School. I was impressed by their investment in this particular election. They're invested in their school and their district. This next question was agreed upon by the entire group. How do we maintain equal learning opportunities at school while also making sure we're providing a place where all students feel safe, welcome, and empowered, no matter what's going on outside their walls? Kendra will be first, followed by Nancy, Matthew, and Nick.
I think it's very important that we listen to that group of students and to all students to see and identify, and teachers to identify what they feel could be improved in order to achieve those goals. I believe that we need to get everybody, right, involved in giving, providing feedback. I would like there to be some data, right? Let's get some numbers together. Let's figure out how much is happening, where it's happening, what can we do to open up more diverse opportunities? I think if we can explore those issues more, and if we can ask the right questions and get the right feedback, I think we can come up with some solutions. And this is going to be a multi-pronged process and solution. This isn't going to be a solution where one size fits all. You've got kids of different ages, you've got staff members who are as diverse as your students, you've got parents with diverse interests as well for their students. So it's about getting everybody to pitch in, put your heads together, and decide what we can do.
Nancy?
When you actually sit down and talk to students, you learn that students have a lot to say. They have opinions, and there's nothing that bothers students more than when you make decisions for them instead of with them. And so I believe as a school board member, we need to search out and come up with avenues and opportunities for students to have a voice, students to have a say. Like several other people up here, I serve on district community committees. One is the PSYAC Committee, and we gave out a survey, and we asked for parents and stakeholders to give their input. And one of the smallest groups that provided input on that survey was our student body. So we need to be really proactive and look ahead and figure out ways that we can provide those students with those feedback opportunities within the regular school day. Some students only have a safe place at school, and we need to recognize that as our stakeholder community. So again, I would just encourage us to continue those dialogues and to have those conversations, because students, they'll tell you the whole honest truth. They won't hold back. I see it every day in my classroom.
Matthew?
So I believe it's critically important to get feedback from all parties involved, which includes parents, it includes faculty, it includes the students. However, it comes down to something very basic, mutual respect, treat each other like the people we are. Be nice, be aware of emotions. So the whole process of growing the students' EQ along with their IQ during their educational journeys is an important way. However, I believe actions speak louder than words, and so when we sit down with students, when we sit down with parents, when we sit down with teachers, and we say we're listening to them, and then nothing happens, no follow-up happens, that has to change, you know? I've been told stories about a child that has had issues with getting to school because of busing issues. That shouldn't be happening in our district. A kid that can't get to school because we don't have the proper bus for them, that's unbelievable.
And Nick?
I think this might be the best question tonight so far. They're exactly right. They see these kids firsthand that are having issues outside of school, and a lot of times maybe the students or other teachers or other staff members don't know what's going on, but the kids know that these students are struggling with something at home. It's impossible for those kids to come to school that have something going on at home in their personal lives, to come to school and have a productive day because they got something else on their mind, you know, whether it's your mom or dad's having issues or something, there's something going on. They can't come to school and think, and a lot of times that spills over into disruptive behavior in the classroom, and it's not the kid that's having the... You know, they're not trying to be disruptive, but there's something else going on that's spilling over. And so then it affects the whole classroom, because now you have a student that has something going on at home, and they come to school, and they don't want to think about whatever subject they're in. And so they're acting now, maybe, and now it's affecting the whole class, and it's affecting the teacher who wants to do her job, and she can't do it, and everyone's thinking this kid's just the problem. Well, there's something else going on with that child that everyone needs to figure out what that is and give them the support they need, because it truly is going to help the rest of the kids learn, and more important, it's going to help that teacher stay on task and teach, and love coming to work every day, and love doing what they do for a career, and it'll help retain those teachers, too.
Our district is... Budget's obviously important. What are some of your priorities when it comes to fiscal responsibility while also meeting the needs of new buildings, additional staff, and potential renovations? Nancy will be first, followed by Matthew, Nick, and Kendra.
That is one doozy of a question, and I would be lying to you if I told you that finances were my strongest area. They're not. I conjugate verbs all day long, and I can tell you what a dangling participle is. Verbs are my jam, but what I am drawing on are my past experiences watching board meetings, reading through previous levies and referendums that we've had, and I'm really going to be counting on that board training and that finance class that I'm going to get the opportunity to take part in and learn. We have big expenditures down the horizon, and I do know that the only way we can fund our new building that will need to be built is probably through another referendum. And so convincing taxpayers to foot the bill for that is going to involve a lot of education and communication, and those are two things that I'm really good at. As a board member, I'm not going to sit up there and pretend that I have all the answers. I don't. And I'm not going to expect teachers to do trainings when I myself wouldn't go to one. So I'm going to go to that finance training that's held by the Iowa Association of School Board Members, and I'm going to learn, and I'm going to do the work. And then I'm going to sit down, and I'm going to talk to folks and try to teach them what I myself have learned.
Matthew?
Numbers for me have come very easily. I am formally educated in mechanical engineering, so I've spent 20 years of my professional career in product design, where it's always trying to get the most efficient design, looking at ways to cut costs, looking at ways to be smarter with the money and the budgets that we have, all the way up until what I'm currently doing now, and that I have responsibility for about $200 million worth of spend in a year's time, and I daily have to work with suppliers, and their ultimate goal is to make a big profit, and my ultimate goal is to get something, you know, at the lowest, best cost possible. So those are two polar opposite people, and at the end of the day, in 10 years of doing this, we've always been able to come to a solution. So the school's budget, I believe, asking questions, asking questions, asking questions. Do we need this? Do we need that? Can we hold off on this? Because I think within our district, everyone knows it is growing extremely fast, and I think that it's not a question of if we're going to need more buildings. We're going to have to have more buildings. Classroom sizes now are already too large, too many students for one teacher, and so that's got to be captured in our future planning.
Nick?
Being a small business owner for 18 years, I've had to make a lot of tough decisions on a daily basis on budget issues. Been involved in building commercial buildings and build them on time and under budget, so I understand how to oversee a construction project. But more importantly, I think your priorities, directly where your finances need to go. And right now, I think we need to find the funding to get school resource officers in our schools. Doesn't necessarily have to all come from the school budget. I think we go to the city of Grimes, state, the federal government. There's money out there we can get that's not going to cost anybody any more money to protect our schools, and I think we could look at the budget, we talk about the buildings, we can discuss all that stuff, but right now, the priority needs to be making our schools safe, so our kids can come to school and not have to worry about anything and can focus on schoolwork.
Kendra?
So I can relate to all of these answers so far. I would concur with most of what's said. I would also like to point out also that when you are... In my experience with working with school districts, in addition to everything that has been said, you also need to understand that school budgets are very complex, and I don't even know all of it. I am ready to learn, ready to dig in, ready to read everything that I can, because there are different pots of money, too, that can only go for certain purposes, and there are different resources that where you can draw money from, and then you have to align your priorities, you know, with your spending, because you've got people, right, like your staff and who are you hiring, and then you have your students who you're serving, and then you've got these educational programs that have their own... serving, and then you've got these educational programs that have their own funding attached to them too, your special education programs, ELL, Get Talent, and so forth. It goes on and on. And so, I think it's just really important for a board to have a very big picture of this complex machine, and it's a bunch of puzzle pieces that you really have to work together to create something that really works for your district.
Public schools are also working through a time of transition. How will you help DCG remain a place where families want to live and educators want to teach? Matthew will be first, followed by Nick, Kendra, and Nancy.
So, one of the things recently passed was this Schools First Act, and so, I've had a lot of questions about it, and in my opinion of that, I believe that this act will have a negative impact on our school district. You know, it, it has a potential of taking funds away from our school district. However, we have two options as a district right now. We can either sit back and complain about it, or we can say, all right, what are we going to do to excel to be the choice district around here so that we aren't negatively impacted by this bill? And so, you know, some of the things that, that we have to look into to, to become a choice school for us is, is how do we get back to the basics of teaching what is required to make students as successful as they want to be, where they can reach their own goals, whether that's college, whether that's going to trade school afterwards, whether that's surviving the last day of high school and, and going straight to work. We just have to ensure that we are supporting them from the classroom, all the way up through the board, and back home so that they can achieve their own personal successes.
Nick.
I think this is a very important question. If we want to retain families in our district, we need to take a look around at some of the surrounding areas of the metro that have lost, has lost control of the school boards, and curriculum's getting jammed down the throats of people that didn't pay attention in elections, and the curriculum gets changed. Parents don't want politics in education. They want their students to come get an education, and anything that doesn't have to do with education doesn't need, need to be part of the curriculum. It needs to be age-appropriate, back to the basics, and needs to be focused on student achievement. I know for a fact there's families in other school districts in the metro that have actually moved out because of what their students have been, have been, what they're bringing home from schoolwork. So, like I said before, we have a great thing going at Grimes. I'm here to protect what we have going for the next generation, the next however many years I'm elected, all about to keep the curriculum age-appropriate and focused on student achievement.
Kendra.
When I think about creating a place where families want to live and teachers want to teach, I immediately thought of my own experience. Well, what drew me to Grimes and what would make me stay here? And so, I think we need to look inward first and capture those reasons and those feelings, and then share that with everybody, communicate with every, with, you know, student achievements. A lot of things happen via word of mouth. If your families are going to be satisfied who attend, who students attend here, then they're going to promote us because they're going to share with their friends and family what a great place this is to be. So, I think that it comes down to making those tough decisions, getting to those learning goals, creating that safe environment. I think all of the things that have sort of come up amongst the questions tonight, if we can get to those issues and come up with some solutions that we can all live with and we can all get behind, I think it'll just come naturally, right? We'll continue to rise to the top.
Nancy.
When my family was looking for a home to purchase, one of the very first communities we looked at was Grimes, and we looked at it for a number of reasons. But the big reason were the teachers, the educators. My own third grade teacher, Mrs. Davidson, who taught me to read, who worked here for years and changed the trajectory of my life. Last year, I had the honor to be a special education associate at South Prairie Elementary, where I worked every single day with amazing educators, many of whom did not hold a teaching certificate. And my own family had the joy and the experience of my son being able to attend a first grade field trip with his peers because not one, but two amazing associates planned for his inclusion all day long. I think we need to show and highlight that there are so many other factors to success other than activities, GPAs, and student achievement. Some students will never be measured by those goals, but many of our students can think of a very specific DCG teacher that has changed their life, and those are the ones we need to find and retain.
This topic in this committee has come up a couple of times. The DCG PSYAC Committee recently met. It's a group made up of students, staff, parent volunteers, and administrators. Together, they identified bullying as a central focus for the upcoming school year. How do you plan to address this in our district and also in our community? Nick will be first, followed by Kendra, Nancy, and Matthew. The PSYAC Committee identified bullying as a central focus for the upcoming school year. How do you plan to address that in our schools and our community?
No student deserves to be bullied, or a teacher, or anybody else in the school. I reviewed the district's policy on bullying, the referral, the follow-up action. There's a plan in place there, it's been thought through. If we just follow that policy and don't make any exceptions, we should be able to address any issue that comes up. I wrote through it again this afternoon, and nothing, nothing should fall through the cracks, and if it does, there's another issue that needs to be addressed. So, like I said, no one, no one should be bullied, and we need to find out the reason that's happening and take action to stop it.
Kendra.
Yeah, so, every district is required to have, you know, such that policy in place, and then you're supposed to have processes in place. And I think we need to capitalize on the parts of it that are working. There was a presentation at a recent school board where I think it was Dallas Center Elementary reported on their, some of their pieces of that, that data that they, and they shared with that what was working. And I think we just need to look at each part of that. Each building is going to be slightly different, right, because of the age levels and the diversity of their students and the teachers that are there, and I think we just need to come down around it and just be a little more practical and be more proactive with what needs to be done yet, what's the work that has to be put into this, because it is very much a concern for all parents, including myself.
Nancy.
First and foremost, student safety is at the very top of the school paradigm. Schools need to be a safe place for every single person to go and feel safe to learn. I think the issue we have currently with bullying is multifaceted. Number one, I think that we need to empower students to be able to solve their own disagreements safely. I think we also need to have a system in place where students are able to then escalate their concerns within their local school building setting. Secondly, I think we need to communicate our current school district bullying policy more effectively to our stakeholder community. When I spoke with many of the families that I spoke with, they were unaware of the actual step-by-step process of reporting an incident of bullying within the school district and the time constraints that follow that incident. So, I see this as both not only a system issue, but also a local building issue, and then bringing it down to the student level so that students feel they have a say and a voice when it comes to solving their own issues within their regular school day.
Matthew.
We, we have to empower our teachers to be able to address issues within the classroom themselves. They can't be scared about sending a misbehaving student to the office for, for the principal to, to take care of. We also have to have administration that is supportive of our district policies to react properly to the incident and to involve the correct people as needed based upon the severity of the incident. And what I said in my opening statement, the story that just, that is the reason why I'm here is not necessarily the incident that occurred, but how it was handled, and the fact that it took getting a Pope County detective to visit our school building, to talk to the superintendent and the school principal, to get them in a room to meet with the person that created the threat, their family, and the person being threatened. Ultimately, in the end, from that situation of what happened, it's been a great story. Feedback from, from our friend is that this kid's behavior completely changed. He isn't bullying people, he's behaving in class, he's asking questions in class, and he's being nice to the girl he threatened. So, having the, the reaction to be severe enough for these kids to understand what they're doing is wrong, they'll learn from it and improve.
Thank you. We would now like to give each candidate an additional 90 seconds for the closing statement. Kendra will go first, followed by Nancy, Matthew, and Nick.
You all came here tonight to hear how each candidate plans to contribute to our educational community as a member of the school board. Remember, a school board operates as a group whose purpose is to set policy and provide general direction for the school district. And in my opinion, it's in the best interest of the district if the board conducts business with consensus whenever possible. It's really important to ask those questions, to be a good listener, and then to take action and try to address all sides whenever possible, because when you can find a consensus and bring people together, then we can all share in that sense of community and ownership and shared pride. I hope my words tonight demonstrated to you that I'm a candidate that can do just that.
Nancy.
Again, I want to thank you all for your time and coming here this evening. I believe that I'm a quality viable candidate for the DCG School Board for a variety of reasons. My educational experience and background, my commitment to our school district through my work and volunteer activities, as well as my own personal advocacy. I believe that when we boil issues down, we all really want what's best for our students. We want a safe, productive learning environment in which all kids can thrive. To echo much of what Kendra said, consensus is really important, and we need to find a way to find common ground, to work together even when we desperately disagree, because ultimately, we all want what's best for students. We all want students to feel safe when they come to school, to enjoy learning, and to feel as though school is an exciting and fun place to be. So, again, when you go out on Tuesday and you vote, I would encourage you all to vote for me, Nancy Baker-Curtis, because I am here to not only represent you, but your students and all of the staff members that make our school community so great. Thank you for your time this evening.
Matthew.
As others have said, safe schools is, is where it's at right now. We have students that are scared to come to school, or hate coming to school for one reason or another, and so, all of the most important things on my agenda all focus on that one singular item, and that is to make sure we are offering a place for our students who, that feel safe, feel comfortable, and happy to come to school where they can learn. Our responsibility as a school district is to provide them that environment where they can come and learn while keeping distractions and other hazards out of their education. As parents, I believe our responsibility is to offer a home environment where the kids are, are gaining the support they need for their educational journey, where they are ready to learn when they come to school, and so that they can spend the whole day learning. But ultimately, as adults, every one of us, I believe, has, is required to protect the innocence of our kids. That's one thing that they have, that once they lose it, they never get it back. It doesn't matter who it is, our kids should be able to keep their innocence for as long as possible.
Nick.
Like I said before, I don't have a hidden agenda. What you see with me is what you get. Everything I've said tonight has come straight from my heart. We have a great thing going here, and I just want to keep it going. I want to protect it for others, families to come. And like other people, all I want is someone to stand up and be a voice of reason for them and for their children. I want our children to continue to get an education. I don't want to open up any doors for an indoctrination. I want to support age-appropriate curriculum, and I'll stand against any ideological curriculum. Thank you.
Please join me in thanking the four candidates here tonight. A video recording of tonight's floor will be posted on our district's YouTube page tomorrow. We'd like to thank Seth, he's in the back, and the team at BCB Live for helping with the audio and video portion of the event. We have about 30 to 35 minutes blocked off to allow our candidates to meet smaller conversations with our public here this evening, and then we will clear so we can have Footloose back in. So, thank you again to our candidates, thank you for our audience here, and thank you to those who will watch at home. Remember to vote on Tuesday, April 11th. Thank you.